Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. And welcome to the November 18th Board Meeting. If you could all rise for the pledge. My allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. James, would you mind taking attendance?
Certainly. President McDonough.
Here.
Vice President Aldrich is absent. Secretary Summers is here. And then Treasurer Whitney.
Here.
Trustee Gibson.
Here.
Trustee Atchison.
Here.
Trustee Capjorni.
Here.
Thank you. Any changes to the board agenda? I have none. Scheduled public comment, we do not have any this evening. You will see our consent agenda, which includes the minutes and HR updates, if anybody would like to make that motion. Sarah Beth, thank you.
Sorry. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Shane, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Right into our superintendent's report with Dr. Meligan.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Lots of exciting things to share, not only from our schools, but also some extracurricular pieces that are happening tonight. That's very exciting. But before we get into that, I do want to ground us in our strategic plan with our vision empowering learners, building community and inspiring futures. Our mission, providing a supportive, safe, and opportunity-rich educational experience that fosters belonging, builds self-empowerment, and prepares learners to contribute to a connected community. And finally, our core values empowerment, belonging, innovation, and integrity. And with that, tonight, the highlights include, we're going to talk about our high school girls volleyball team, very exciting. Section 31 AA funding update, our middle school robotics competition, school and department highlights. And then we have a fantastic presentation from Leonard. Not only do we have the school presentation, but we have several performers here tonight. So that's really exciting. Thanks for being here. We'll have a safety update, and then we'll have an update on our Wildcat Remembrance Day. So, to our volleyball, our girls volleyball are not only district champions, they're also regional champions. So, they won the district title by defeating Clarkston in a five-set match, and the regional title by defeating Romeo in another five-set match, securing their first regional championship since 1997. So that's pretty exciting. And Erin, if you want to... This is the moment they became regional champs. A very stressful but exciting moment. So, tonight, because they are regional champs, now they are at, right this very moment, they are in Port Huron competing in the quarterfinals for states. So that is pretty exciting. So, obviously, we're here and not there, but we do send them our very best of luck and hope to hear great news. So very exciting. All right. I do want to give an update on our 31 AA funding. The application has been submitted. This is a confirmation for the funding that we received on the 13th, November 13th. This is the per pupil state funding to ensure we can continue supporting student wellness and safety initiatives. There has been a lawsuit filed on November 12th by a coalition of other school districts and individuals. Oxford is not involved in this lawsuit. The lawsuit requests for the court to review the constitutionality of the new section 31 AA funding itself. If an injunctive relief is granted, this may delay Oxford receiving these funds. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the impact of that lawsuit. But we did already apply for those funds. We'll just need to wait and see what happens for those funds to be released. All right. Another very exciting event. We had four middle school teams competing at a robotics competition in Lake Orion at Walden Middle School. The teams, it's Tower, Cyborg Cats, Metal Benders, and Electra Cats. And there was a lot of energy and heat in that building. A lot of teenagers, our pre-teens, running around, but they were so excited, and our kiddos did amazing. Three of our four teams made it to the elimination rounds out of 36 teams. So that was pretty exciting. I don't know if Mike, if you want to share any additional thoughts on that experience?
I mean, it was just a great showing by Oxford again. We have a robotics program, and this is, it shows with our success at the middle school level. We have two teams competing in two weeks in different locations. But, so Cyborg Cats and Electra Cats will be competing then. I know it's going to, we'll see. I mean, it's been a fun season so far, and the kids, every year, I say this. I mean, the kids have grown so much every year. The challenges are brand-new every year. And so, it's just, they have to come together and figure out a way to, there's so many different solutions as well. This really showcases that, just the diversity in robots. But it's just a great program, and I'm proud of all the teams.
And their robots had to be programmed, I think it's the first 30 seconds of the round, and they can't touch their robot, they can't control their robot. It has to be programmed to pick up a ball or take a ball and like shoot it into a basket. So they have to program all of that. So that was really cool. And they had to adjust it sometime, like train it a little differently. But I actually got to go to the pit. That was very fun. All of our teams were right there in the pit. So that was, that was great. So, great day. All right. For bridges highlights, they wanted to lift up. Dylan Carr was honored as a Student of the Month. They have their PBIS focus, which is collaboration. And then students Deandre Hunter and Priscilla Gamas Palma used their creativity to create a collaboration board. And they're in the process of writing a grant to purchase bulletin board supplies to support their creative aspirations. For OVA, their highlights, OVA Virtual Academy in partnership with Legacy Hybrid, celebrated Veterans Day 2025. They want to give a special thank you to the Legacy Choir, Genie and the Loft Program, Legacy Hybrid Directors, Gene Hotchkiss and Misty Martin, and especially the keynote speakers and veterans. Lieutenant Colonel Shane Childers, United States Air Force, Corporal Elijah Thomas of the Marines. We are so thankful for our veterans and their families, for their sacrifices, for our great nation. In 2026, OVA looks forward to celebrating Veterans Day with multiple hybrid school partners. Crossroads, students enjoyed a Michigan autumn tradition at Blake's Apple Orchard, picking apples, pumpkins, and fun activities. As well as students and staff, we're grateful to the Oxford High School Student Club, I am third, volunteering to paint. They've spent two nights and continue the project together on Tuesday, November 18th, beginning at 3:00. OES, lots of things going on at OES. On the left there, you can see third grader in Ms. Harvey's class, who made cards for the Cancer Institute. They showed kindness and shared words of encouragement. Their student council recently organized the annual food drive, collecting hundreds of items for our local food pantry, Fish. They also launched their annual giving tree, providing holiday support for families in need with our community. And through these student-led initiatives, OES continues to foster leadership, empathy, and community engagement among our students. They also collaborated with the high school students last week. They had the football players, the high school football players, come and speak to the fourth and fifth graders about good sportsmanship at recess. The OHS Math Honors Club organized a fun-filled math night for our OES students. That's the picture on the right there. As I said, lots going on at OES. The OES Spanish teacher had students bring in pictures of their loved ones, displaying a beautiful afrenda, which celebrates a unique Mexican tradition. And then a shout-out to the OES Food Service and Noonade Team for getting into the Halloween spirit and taking care of our kids each day. At Lakeville, they have their annual book fair. I think we also have it here at Leonard right now. And we rely on our parent volunteers to help with those book fairs. So this is a couple of pictures of our parents helping our young learners at the book fair. Lakeville's fourth grade students visited the Michigan Capitol Building. The pictures above are students looking up at the dome of the Capitol Building. Now, remember that, because you're going to see it again, but at a different age here, just a minute. I thought this was really fun. So this is Clear Lake. And the top four students who raised the most money for Fund Run received a ride to school in style, along with donuts for their class, with one of the local agencies. So Deputy Barnes SRO drove first grader Vivian. Lieutenant Sarah Racer drove, who's with Oxford Fire, drove second grader Eli. And Chief Soald, Oxford Village Police, drove first grader Sully and fourth grader Jackson. So I thought that was a really clever way to celebrate our students and their efforts. Also at Clear Lake, the elementary fifth grade Spanish classes explored DIA's Day of the Dead Afrendas exhibit and visited Mexican Town to practice speaking Spanish and discover Mexican cultural products. October Student of the Month at Clear Lake were recognized for being caring thinkers and principled. Students received a certificate and new this year, a yard sign to display at home. Additionally, Clear Lake collected 77 pounds of unwanted Halloween candy. I don't know what that means, honestly. What does that look like? For Treats for Troops Candy Drive, it was dropped off at the Oakland County Sheriff Oxford Substation. All right. Our eighth graders had an unforgettable adventure in Washington, DC. Our very own board trustee, James, here, went with them. What they shared with me, walking through history at Mount Vernon to exploring various memorials, student-connected classroom learning to real-life experiences. The trip was packed with learning, relationship-building, and memorable moments. So James, I don't know if you wanted to add something, since you got to chaperone?
I did. So I had the pleasure and luxury to actually go with this. I myself went to eighth grade and didn't do nearly as much as this stuff. So I actually checked with Mr. Groves, who was the teacher that I was partnered up with. I have to give a big shout-out to him. He's been there several years in a row. And the company I go with, World Strides, did a really good job. Now, mind you, this is unprecedented times for the longest government shutdown. So when we got to DC, we didn't know what we were going to be able to do. We had a tentative itinerary, but that was all relative to what was open, what wasn't open. So as much as some people think it was just a quick vacation, I'm going to run through the list, and bear with me. I may have to breathe a couple of times here as I go through this. But our bus, our group of eighth graders, the first night we got there, now, mind you, we landed at 9:50. We went through the Vietnam Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial, the Korean Memorial, Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial. Got back to our hotel. It was about 10:30, quarter to 11:00. The kids were still kind of excited and stuff, but we told them they had to get to bed. Next day, early on, we, first thing was Mount Vernon. We spent several hours there, looking at George Washington's tomb, touring, going to tour the property, checking out the house. We also went to the World War II Memorial that day, checked out Washington's monument, Jefferson Memorial, FDR. And then that night, we went to the White House, which was kind of interesting, because that was the same night that the House was actually signing the spending bill. And so the president was in the White House, so we were able to actually watch the Marines do the changing of the guard at the Oval Office and the activities there. So that was pretty exciting, first time myself, without watching it like on C-SPAN or something. And then after we got done there, went over to the Kennedy Center, walked around there, got a tour, went up on the terrace. The next day, spending bill was signed, president had signed it off. We did our big group photo there on the left of the Capitol Building. And then we immediately grabbed our groups, and we all went as quickly as possible around to the back to actually get a tour of the Capitol Building, and found out that we were one of the first five tours since opening. So it was interesting. Our tour guides, like, I haven't worked in six and a half weeks, bear with me. I'm going to try to remember everything, but this may be a little, little interesting. So after spending a couple of hours at the Capitol Building, we went to the Library of Congress. We stopped by the Supreme Court. Went to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. We stopped over at the Navy Memorial, World War II Memorial. Then we did Arlington Cemetery, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. We did Reef Lane there, and then we went and had dinner on the Potomac on a boat. There was two different school districts and a wedding party there. It was a great experience. Got lots of photos there. After we got off the boat, we ended up going to the American Veterans Memorial at night. And then on our last day, we did the Air Force Memorial, the Marines Memorial, National Cathedral, National Archives. So we were able to see the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution Bill of Rights, did the Spy Museum. And then we finished off with the American History, which was the only museum that was open at the Smithsonian that we could get into. My bus had a great time. Our leader from World Strides nicknamed me "One More Time, Mr. Summers" for one more memorial. So whenever we get back on the bus, it was like 9:30, 9:45, he's like, "Mr. Summers says we need to do one more time." And all the kids were like, "Ah!" But then we get off, and they were asking questions. And the things that were told to them and explained on day one, they were able to recall it on the final day. And it was just, if anybody gets the opportunity to do it, for kids going and adults of kind, I highly recommend it. And I really appreciate Ms. Blakowski for always coordinating and getting it going. It was a great experience. So I know that's probably a lot more than you expected, Dr. Meligan, but yeah, it was great.
How many days was that?
We got there on Monday. We got home on Saturday, about 2:00 AM.
Wow.
So yeah.
You fit all that in.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Just one more memorial. Let's all, you know, we can do one more.
Just one more, James. That's great. Thank you for sharing that. All right. Remember I said, remember that picture? Well, these are our eighth graders. They went, this is a different group of eighth graders. They participated in a guided tour of Michigan State Capitol and the Supreme Court Learning Center, exploring state government, the justice system, and civic involvement. Highlights included Heritage Hall, the Capitol Rotunda, Governor's Office, Legislative Chambers, and the old Supreme Court Chamber. So it sounds like we like to keep these kids very, very busy. All right. Our high school highlights first include our dance conservatory performance. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to attend one of those performances, but it's like going to a professional performance. So typically, it's held as fall and spring concerts. They're renowned showcases that highlight the exceptional talent, rigorous training, and profound commitments of its students' dancers. These concerts are far more than typical high school recitals. They represent the culmination of an intense college preparatory program designed to mold aspiring dancers into versatile, skilled artists. Lots of accolades for our swim teams and our divers. Delaney Sikora there on the left, league champion in both the 200 free and 500 free, as well as all-league in the 500 free. Ashlyn Naylis, league champion in both the 200 IM and the 100 breast. All-league in the 200 IM with a state qualifying time. And Paige Prill, all-league in diving, top three, with an All-American consideration score. Ella Martin, all-league 100 breast. And 200 medley relay of Delaney Defoe, Ashlyn Naylis, Olivia Burstow, and Evelyn Bishop. League champs and all-league. So very, very talented individuals in our district, clearly. So I also wanted to lift up some departmental highlights. This is our Special Education Department. Our speech pathologists are back from the successful Talking AAC Conference in Lansing, equipped with valuable new Augmented and Alternative Communication AAC strategies. This training will significantly improve how we support our students with disabilities, providing them with essential high and low-tech tools to express their needs and actively participate in the classroom. Their commitment was visible as they even wore matching shirts to represent Oxford. I'm sure they stood out in the crowd. All right. And what I'm sure you've all been waiting for. I would like to welcome Mr. K. and the, I believe, Super Singers up. Did you want to introduce them, Mr. K.?
So Ms. Weisand is our brand-new music teacher this year. And I asked her, with as many of her members as she could get here, which I think is about 14-ish, just to sing one song, just to speak for about a minute or minute and a half about, about, about their music experience with her. And also, the reason I chose her, just really quick, is I have a passion for helping new teachers. And she is a new teacher, and we need to do everything we can in all the districts across the state to support and keep as many of our wonderful new teachers as possible. So here she is.
Hello. As Marty said, my name is Sarah Weisand. When he asked me to briefly give you all a look into Leonard's music class, I found myself thinking about what was the most important thing to talk about with my time. I thought about the curriculum and maybe the scope and sequence the kids have been following. I thought about talking about their upcoming projects or concerts and all the things that the kids have been working on. But the thing about music that I find the most special is the medium it provides for the kids to express themselves. While I could talk for hours about the subject, I thought, who better to hear about what music means to the students than from a student herself? With a short testimony over her look on music, I invite fifth grader Paisley Voss up to speak before our Super Singers just sing a quick song.
One thing that I love about music is how it connects people. We all have different experiences and backgrounds, and being able to connect through music is something that is so special. For instance, in our fifth grade concert, we are singing "Here Comes the Sun" by The Beatles. For me, this reminds me of car rides with my grandma and impromptu karaoke sessions. It is bittersweet because I miss her, but it feels like a part of me every time, no, me is with her, every time I get to sing it in music class. For other kids, this song means something else, but together, it creates a special creation that is unique to us. I think it is important not to just learn core subjects, but to support the things that help us build emotional connections. This takes learning from being an individual process to a group setting. It helps us be better people. To show a bit of the joy that makes us, that music brings us, Leonard Super Singers are going to sing a song to kick off this holiday season. Welcome, Super Singers, and this is "In the Spirit."
We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. Raise your voice, sing out loud, bop, boom, bop, boom, bada-bow. Send your voice to the crowd, bop, boom, bop, boom, bada-bow. You can join the celebration, come on, come on, come on, come on, yeah. In the spirit, sounds are ringing, boats are swinging, dancers are singing. Gotta get, gotta get in the spirit, even if it's playing, boats are swinging, holidaying. Gotta get in the spirit now. We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. Raise your voice, sing out loud, bop, boom, bop, boom, bada-bow. Send your voice to the crowd, bop, boom, bop, boom, bada-bow. You can join the celebration, come on, come on, come on, come on, yeah. You can join the celebration, come on, come on, come on, come on, yeah. You can join the celebration now. We're in the spirit now, yeah.
Thank you for allowing music here at Leonard to steal a bit of your time. And on behalf of me and the students, we want to say a big thank you to Oxford for your continued support of fine arts. So thank you.
Thank you for being here. That was awesome. Go, Super Singers! All right. And now we'll have Mr. K. with his Leonard presentation.
Are you just, or am I? Okay. First of all, thanks for having me here, or thanks for being here also at our school. I'm happy to be here for, to represent our staff, our students, parents, and the community. And the opening slide, I just want to share really quick, the reason I chose that photo, it is a photo of our first Student of the Month celebration we had, which was at the beginning of October. We just had our second one last Wednesday. And those are some parents and kids here. And the reason I wanted to share it is, Leonard has been doing Student of the Month for a long time, but through some conversations I had with some people in late August and early September, we decided we wanted to invite our parents this year, and it's really been wonderful. We had this gym with all the tables for both the first and second one, jam-packed with about 40 to 50 parents, grandparents, and our 20 to 25 honorees for each of our Student of the Month celebrations. So I just wanted to start with that picture, because it is so important to us to do what we can to get as many parents in the building as possible, as frequently as possible. Our purpose tonight is really to highlight some of the work of our staff and students, to inform you of my goals, which I worked on with staff during my early, you know, early days here, to share those with you as interim principal, and also to share some achievements, some data, and some paths and upcoming extracurricular activities. A little bit of background, this year, we had 206 students on count. We've lost about four or five in recent weeks, and we're adding another three or four, I think tomorrow, actually. So we're still just over 200, so obviously on the smaller side. We have roughly 50 staff, but many of them are part-time in and out. We do not have 50 full-time staff here. Some are here one day, some two, two and a half days, you know, various times that they're here. And in most cases, like with our music teacher, they're shared with other buildings. And in most cases, like with our music teacher, they're shared with other buildings. I have found in my short time here, I've only been here since early August, really involved staff, very committed, lots of good conversation with them about, you know, what they'd like to see moving forward, and not only this year, but also in the coming years. And it's just been really great working with the staff so far this year. And as I wrote on there too, they also really do a nice job working collaboratively in their grade-level teams, which is nice. So some of the goals we came up with this year, and the first one I'll show in a little more detail in a moment because it's our one building-centric goal. But what we're really hoping to work on, and they're all tied into our strategic plan, of course, is the safe and supportive and connective school goal is PBIS-related. It was really important to staff, as I got to know them in August, and also heard from some other people in the district, that we really try to boost our efforts in this area. So we definitely picked that as one of our goals, which again, I'll share a more expansive look at what that goal looks like on the next slide. Climate and culture was another really big one. I have only been here since August. I knew nothing of Leonard upon my arrival. I had heard in some one-on-one meetings that I had with every single staff member, and again, some people in the district, that this could be a good thing for us to work on, and the staff really wanted us to work on this as well. And as it says there, really, my goal is to, was to try to improve communication from me to them, from them to me, and also to work on staff morale in a variety of ways. And there's so many examples that I could give of how I've tried to do that with them. We have a once-a-month or twice-a-month Donuts and Discussion Morning, where I bring in donuts and cider and juice, and we have kind of a theme. And we come in and talk about our past week, our upcoming week. We had one where we all had to pick a song that described the state of our classroom so far this year, and we had a really, a lot of fun with that. I kind of played the song on Spotify once the teachers mentioned what their song was, and we listened to it for a minute, so that was fun. And just one other thing, like I said, I can mention a lot. It's kind of the way I've always worked as an administrator. After arrival, every morning, I pretty much get to every single classroom just to say hello, see if they need anything, how they doing, just kind of get a temperature of the building. And it's something that, again, I heard from them, that they really hoped that in my time here, I could be around the building a lot. So I always try to just start that right at the beginning of the day to sort of get on, you know, get off on the right foot in that sense. And for the third goal, it's school improvement team-related, and it's obviously related to academics and data. Just wanting to improve our math and reading outcomes, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Obviously, using data analysis to do that and progress monitoring, meaning at various times over the next weeks and months, right through the end of the year, we will be consistently monitoring how we're doing with some of those initiatives and some of those goals. So the building-centric goal, I'll read it word-for-word. I'm sure you can see it up there, but it is, it is very clearly PBIS-related, just for us to be more purposeful and planful and intentional with using it. A lot of the staff felt that we needed a little more help really looking at this daily, weekly, monthly, not just sort of sporadically here and there. So I listened to them, we talked through what that might look like, got a lot of help also from some, from some people at the district. And the goal, obviously, is to benefit the students. We're doing everything we do is for the students, but to improve in the classroom, the environment of the building, belonging respect and so forth, and respect for our rules and procedures. And it also ties into helping with the climate and the culture of the building as well, for the sake of staff, too. Alright, speaking of climate surveys, so there's three issues here that were some of our higher-ranking indicators from last year. And, you know, this isn't something I experienced last year, again, because I wasn't here, but I wanted to pick these three out and explain why I chose these and what we're trying to do to sort of stay at this level, since they were higher-ranking ones, or even improve them a little bit. So one of the survey items, and these were from parents, by the way, as it says up there, is there a teacher, or there is a teacher, counselor, other staff member to whom a student can go for help with a problem? So obviously, it's nice to see that 85% or more, 85%, we'd love for it to be more, and we're going to work on that, feel that way. And what we're going to do, as like it says in the right column, "Proposed Actions to Continue Positive Results", is to really clearly identify and communicate to staff who staff and students can go to for support-based, based on their specific needs. So a lot of staff felt that they needed to know, but students also really needed to know who the go-to person was for such-and-such, or if it's a kid with an IP or general adder, if it's this type of behavior, that, or whatever it may be, or if a kid's having a certain problem. So we really sort of outlined and clarified what that looked like for everybody. The second one that we did pretty well with last year was that school-based administrators were available. In order to continue that, I've tried really hard to continue, you know, as, doing as good a job as possible with email communication. And it's always been important to me, like I said with a couple of things earlier, to give prompt and respectful communication back to parents. And I really think carefully about that when communicating with them, regardless of what they're reaching out about, concerned, something they're angry about, still trying to, you know, always be respectful with that. And also, just reflecting and improving on our communication, our availability, like listening to some feedback from families, parents, about what's working, what's not working. We'll try to even do better with that one as well. And the third one is that families are informed about school-sponsored activities, such as tutoring, after-school programs, and so forth. We had a 92% on that one. We are continuing school-wide emails, regular communication in a variety of ways. We are sending semi-monthly smores for families. And I hope some of you have seen, they've really been, been good. We have a woman who works in the front office who puts that together, runs it by me. We talk about it and send it out about twice a month. And we've gotten some really good feedback with that from families as well. Alright, some of the lower indicators from last school year, again, from the parents. Teachers successfully show students how lessons relate to life outside of school. I've found this to be tough for an elementary school compared to middle school and high school as kids are getting older and start thinking more, even at those ages, about their careers. However, we still need to get there in elementary school. So we thought of some, of some things to do, some proposed actions to improve this year. A lot of grade-level collaboration about some opportunities to just sort of tie some of their lessons into some, you know, career-type conversations, things outside of school. We have tapped into our Career Readiness District Experts to get some ideas for how we can incorporate some of that into our lessons. And also, we're trying to have every grade level take at least one field trip that we could somehow connect or tie into something to do with a potential career. And that includes, you know, our 4th grade trip is coming up to the Capitol as well, among other places in the community. We also scored a little bit low with our parent climate survey on students being aware of safety and security procedures. This is a really big one for us to talk about, for obvious reasons. Every school needs to be sure they're really on this. So we sort of increased the frequency of lessons in the classroom early in the year towards safety and security. We actually have lessons that every teacher in the building would go over, something as simple as even how to get on and off the bus, let alone how to behave on the bus, or how to walk through the hallways, and how to enter and exit the cafeteria, as well as obviously drills. We do the drills, and we've talked to them about the drills and taught them, you know, how to proceed through those drills. We've also had some PBIS activities and lessons connected with daily safety procedures, so sort of like what I already mentioned. But we've also been reteaching them. So rather than just doing these lessons in September, which all the teachers did, we have dates set where we're reteaching some of them. Not every single one, every time we reteach, although we are going to do that in January. When we return on Monday, the 5th, we're going to go through the whole process again with going over some safety and security procedures to sort of reteach it after the long break. But in between September and January, teachers have been asked to talk a little more about the buses, talk a little more about recess and so forth, just to, you know, keep those conversations going. And of course, the safety drills, we do like every school does, and we've been debriefing with them, we've been talking with them about why we do certain drills, and just making sure that we're getting those right. And they've done a really good job with the drills. And the third one, also obviously super important, is about not tolerating bullying. You know, 61%, and that is not awful, but it needs to be much, much higher. We need that to be in the 80s and 90s, hopefully, at the end of this year. We have done bullying prevention units, and we're continuing to do that. We talk about the importance of it, obviously, with the students. Our behavior team, which consists of four of us, are constantly reviewing our behaviors and consequences, and how to communicate with parents and explain to them what happened to your kid because of this and why, and how it ties into things that we're trying to change or help improve with the school when it comes to overall behavior, and obviously, any perception that bullying is not treated seriously enough. We don't want the perception, let alone the reality. So we really have spent a lot of time on that as well. And obviously, we're following all board policies. We have checklists to deal with the accusations, so to speak, of bullying that we could go through as, as a group with the behavior team or with kids, just to be sure where we're at in the process, based on some behaviors. Okay, so before we look at some of this data, and I'm not going to, again, read this word-for-word or talk about the numbers necessarily word-for-word. We'll, we'll talk about it in some generalities and what we're doing about them. The numbers are what the numbers are. They're, they're not great. We know we have a lot of work to do. Every school, regardless of where their numbers are, wants to get higher, right? The goal is to be wherever you're at one year and get higher the next year, whether you're sort of in the lower, middle, or higher tier of those scores. I do want to tell you, even in my short time here, I can assure you that the staff is taking this very seriously. This is very important to them. They talk about, they talked about it. Every single person mentioned it to me when I did my one-on-one interviews with them when I first met them back in late August. This means a lot to them. They want these to look better, they want to work hard to make these better, and I believe that they're, you know, off to a good start this year, doing everything they can in order to improve these. So what you see on the left is the last three years of M-Step reading for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. On the right, same with M-Step math. If you kind of follow the numbers down diagonally, you could see what some kids did from one grade to another. So that's one way to look at the numbers. There's obviously some other ways and a lot of different ways to dissect data. But that is for the last three years, and the M-Step is, is every year will be conducted again in the spring. So we will be doing everything we can to work hard and have our students prepared in general, but especially also to be ready to, you know, do, do well on this test. On the bottom there are some interventions that we are working on now that I've, you know, gotten some help, again, with some people in the building and from the district to start getting some of these going. As I've said a couple of times, I can't speak to prior years, but these are some things, including some other things not listed. There's only so much room on the slide, that's some things that we're working on. We are, have these collaboration days where we're working hard on curriculum, both within the building and also across the district. Lot of look at data. What does this mean? What is happening in my classroom? What does this tell me? And the data we could look at, by the way, is by class and even individual student. We could look at any individual student and exactly how they're doing and what they've been doing in each part of various tests. We are using Core 95 phonics, which the teachers love. It was piloted, I know, in many classrooms in a couple of grades last year. I've observed dozens of lessons on phonics, on the Core Phonics program, and I've gotten great feedback from the teachers, which is a good thing. If they are believing strongly in what they're doing and what they're teaching, the hope is that will translate day after day, week after week, and hopefully, again, help out with some scores. And there's some math interventions mentioned there, Delta Math, Phonics for Reading, U-Fly, and Rewards, and some other programs as well that we are doing for interventions, as well as obviously frontline work with the classroom. I'm in the classes a lot, lot of observation, and the teachers usually get at least a little bit of feedback, if not a lot, if it's their formal observation from my time in their classrooms. Alright, so that's the state data. The local data is here. This is from our STAR literacy and STAR reading. This is actually very recent, so this is just from a few weeks ago. Blue, well above the benchmark, green, at or above, orange on watch, red intervention. I believe you've seen this presented from other schools, so obviously, I don't need to explain what you're looking at. But those are our numbers that you can see there. 71% at blue or green for this year's kindergartners, 48 for 1st grade, 67 for 2nd, if you can't see that far over there, 50 for 3rd, 58 for 4th, again, where they're well above or at or above, and then 61 for our current 5th graders. And then this is for, just again, this fall, for math. Same color-coded situation, obviously. Our kindergartners did wonderfully, and some of the other scores are okay, but we will, again, continue to work on these areas and others. Alright, last thing to cover for now, unless there's any questions. Just some points of pride, as we saw in Dr. Milligan's presentation, just a lot of things going on around the district. Like all schools, I could pick 50 or 100 pictures, but I just wanted to sneak a few in here to talk about some things going on here. We obviously had some Halloween parties. And in the upper-right corner there, we have a wonderful fundraiser from our amazing PTO, by the way. We have a really, really active and positive PTO. It's been an absolute joy working with them. Our staff actually decorate pumpkins, and then we raffle those off to kids. They make about $1,000 a year on that. In the lower-left corner, it's just a poster we have outside. We're going to be writing letters to the Addison Fire Department over the next couple of weeks before Thanksgiving. The display case in the bottom right, back to some of our talk about PBIS, is we decided to fill our display cases with some of the things students can get as rewards for displaying wonderful, positive behavior. One of them is half-full, where you might have walked by earlier, and this one is down the main center hallway, so the kids love it. They walk by, they look at it, gets them really excited. There's one of our, that is our second Student of the Month display right there in the upper-left. Little bit of the Halloween parade. Leonard, I learned, has had a long, long history of having a wonderful Halloween parade. It was really cool. I was, I knew what it would look like, but I was even blown away more just being there. It was very, very cool, and the kids loved it, a lot of parents showed up. The Glowing with Kindness is an example of something we're doing. Every month, we're having a PBIS celebration. At the very end of every month, the Glowing with Kindness was sort of a glow stick dance we had here in the gym. I do want to add, while it is rare, part of the process is also to reward, well, it's really to reward all the kids, but we did have a couple of kids that needed to sit out a few minutes here and there because of some behaviors that were building up, you know, towards that time. And those are really difficult, almost tear-inducing, tough decisions. They did all get to come and enjoy about 50 or 60% of the dance, but it's just something that we have to do, that's the whole point of it, right? Is to reward the behavior, but also, kids need to understand that there are some, you know, consequences for their choices. We have an extremely vibrant Safety Patrol, which is run by Ms. Musgrove, who's been doing it for years. She's absolutely fantastic and has been a great help to me as a very experienced Leonard teacher. And I believe this might be the last one. There's a few posters around the building right now. Those are only three of about the seven or eight. But, but again, back to our building-centric goal, we really wanted to display things around the building as much as possible about being principled, being caring, being a thinker, about all sorts of different behaviors in the hallway, in the bathroom, in the playground, is the ones you see here. There's a cafeteria one here, bus line, all sorts of other things. And we're trying our best just to continuously remind students of our expectations. And that's it. Any questions?
Yes, I do. Back to the assessment data. So if you're, you're looking, as you mentioned, you can look kind of diagonal and see the classes move down. So I'm kind of trying to, maybe I'm looking too much into it, but I'm trying to compare the state assessment data from last year, so we're seeing here, with our district STAR data, right, of this year. So if we're looking at last year's, last year's 4th grader in the state assessment at 16% proficient.
For math, right.
How, how am I reading, so like, if I'm looking at this year's 5th grader, so I'm trying to kind of let, make those, make those, that data makes sense, I guess. I'm trying to understand if we're only helping or giving intervention to 13% of kids on watch to another 18%, but then we look back and we've got 12% proficient, or 16% proficient, sorry, from last year. So, so I'm just trying to understand how we're, how we're making that, those corrections using this data.
So I can give you a short answer, and I think Anita will jump into. So the 16% you're seeing there for those 4th graders, and then you're wondering, you're seeing here for those same 5th graders, that there are 18% on watch and 13 at intervention, right? Okay, and then what we're doing. So the, my short answer, but Anita will probably have a much more better answer than I will, being newer to the district and this role, and with, with their testing, of the local testing, is there are two different tests. The M-Step is the state test, obviously, in the spring. And this test is more local assessment data, so that we get to those immediate interventions. So the kids are tested in the fall, so that we then have the whole rest of the year. As far as the numbers and why they may look that way, that's harder for me to answer.
So Marty did start off by saying there are two different tests, and I think that's very important. They have different purposes and functions. The STAR assessment ranges from a 20- The STAR assessment ranges from a twenty to maybe a thirty-minute assessment. It is meant to be a temperature check. Are students on track for reaching end-of-the-year benchmarks or standards? The M-Step assessment, I have a student here who might be like, "Yeah, I totally feel like this." They're hours long and one time. Am I right? Yeah, she's like, "Yeah." And so they're a one-time deeper dive. It is challenging for us because it is often hard to explain why sometimes our local assessment shows we have more kids on track, and I think even from a day-to-day interaction with our teachers, our performance of our students doesn't always translate to the M-Step setting. So, I do want to point out that even if students are falling in the red, we actually have a higher threshold of where we're going to intervene on this. We don't just intervene with the students that are in the red, but we actually look at thirty percent, anybody who's below the thirtieth percentile, and we do further diagnostics to identify a potential intervention. And so, it might even be that somebody scored here, they're in the green, but the teacher's like, "Hmm, we might want to look at them a little bit further," so we might still do that. We also have kids that there's actual, they might be scoring in here because maybe they have some test anxiety, that's not their thing, but our classroom data might tell a different story, so that plays a role too. So I can appreciate the disconnect between what this bar shows, or the math one specifically with what the M-Step shows. It's always hard to know what the variable is for why it doesn't translate to that setting, but we do this three times a year, so we have a pretty good track on where kids are going.
Okay, thank you, Anita.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up to that. In that data, I know it's just, I'm asking you to spitball here, but about how many of those kids, I know it's hard to believe kids will just rush through a test because they just want to get through. How much do you see variable-wise that it's just kids rushing through just to get through it?
I don't think it's as many as we think, actually. I think a lot of kids take it pretty seriously. I do think they get to fatigue. I have personally watched that. I also think there are some skills that are involved in taking that assessment. So for example, the amount kids have to type, that is pretty challenging. So for example, in the ELA assessment, students write out everything that's expected of them and then they're expected to type it. And so I have personally witnessed kids where you're like, "Oh, my God, you wrote all of this, but you only typed this," and you can't say anything to them. You can't even, you can't redirect them. That's a violation in proctoring. And so it's hard, or like, you know, sometimes you're going behind them and you're like, "Oh, are you sure?" In your head, again, because you can't say anything. So I, I think most kids take it pretty seriously, but I do think there's test fatigue, and then there are skills that are required of them to transfer to that setting. Most of the work our kids are doing, and that could be something for us to look at, is more skill-focused. They're doing a lot of paper, pencil, thinking, collaboration, and then when you go to that setting, it's a lot, you're on your own, one-on-one with a computer. You're sometimes navigating a split screen, you're, again, producing a lot in typing, and so, yeah. I would say most kids take it serious, but there is a fair amount of fatigue. We have kids that are testing four or five hours to finish the ELA assessment. That's sad. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And I'll, I'll come back, but I appreciate that very much. So do we see similar, I don't know, gaps, but similar blocks in the math side of things that could explain something like that? I mean, I very much appreciate fatigue and especially a skill level as far as typing it all in. Do we have something similar to explain kind of the math prop?
I would say we have less of an explanation for that, if I'm being honest. It's something that we need to work on, the transfer. We are looking at ways where we can really kind of understand the way students see the problems versus maybe how our curriculum explains it or teaches it. There are so many different math curriculums, so they might present information very differently than how it comes out on the M-Step. So one of the things that actually we're looking at, I have a meeting on Tuesday about, is looking at assessment banks essentially, so what do those problems look like, and trying to practice those with students to say, "Where have we learned this? How do you translate that to this setting?" Because sometimes language is what trips kids up. And so that's something for us to work at, but I think we have less of an explanation there, if I'm being honest.
Anne?
I had a question on the item of the survey where parents answered, all students are aware of the safety and security procedures. And I, I hear you and I appreciate the, the things that you are trying to do to improve that score. That's fantastic. I just wanted to kind of say, as a parent of an elementary student, if I'm taking that survey and I'm looking at that, there could be some, some bias on my part. My kids may know better, but I get the impression that they don't. And so this is kind of a question and a leading answer for you. Have you thought about ways that you can educate the parents more on your safety and security procedures? And I do know part of that question because you had implemented a whole new bus system, if you want to maybe elaborate on that and, and tell us some more things that you're doing to educate the parents as well as the students on your safety and security.
Yeah, so that's a great question, and actually, I'm glad you asked it because I was going to mention that, the answer that I'm going to give you. So, in general, not even just specific to Leonard, I agree a hundred percent that a district, let alone an individual school, needs to do everything they can to help parents understand either, as I kind of call them, new or in-the-moment decisions, like our completely different arrival and dismissal policy, which was, which was convenience-based in some ways, but way more safety-based than anything. And I know that that entire process with rationale was shared with parents. What I do think we can do a better job of, and I will just speak to Leonard because I cannot speak to the other schools, is I am confident, and I'm sorry because I keep saying this, I can't speak to anything prior to this August, I am confident that right now, we are really doing a nice job communicating to the kids and explaining to them as elementary school students, the rationale for what we're doing and why we're doing it, again, from A to Z, from the minute they walk in to the minute they leave. We certainly probably could even share maybe some bullet points, some snippets of those lessons with parents, or in some of the emails that I've sent home, you know, I probably could have included some of those, and I could see a reason to do that, you know, going forward as we continue, not even just with the reteaching I mentioned in January, but I, there was a plan to do that, didn't really get there with some of the early emails yet, but I do agree that that's worthwhile as far as, you know, communicating by email or in other ways, maybe not in the, maybe in the smore, but certainly in some of the other, just mass emails. And I agree that it's important, yeah. And if you want me to, the, the arrival and dismissal was completely changed, actually, thanks to Gary, who really put the process in and I kind of continued it when I got here. It wasn't going well here. There were maybe some things some people did like about it, and maybe some things they don't like about the current new system, but I, I know just from seeing what we're doing now, that it is extraordinarily safer for parents, for kids, whether they're bussers, walkers, drivers. We have a very organized system of in and out, like pretty much most schools that I've ever been at do, even when my kids were in elementary school twenty years ago. Very organized way in and out for the parents. We have security out there, we have a lot of adults outside, and same with the buses. The bus system is in a totally different place from where the drop-off and pickup is for cars, and it's just going great. The first couple of weeks it was rocky because we were slower, it was a little clunky because we were getting used to it. It's running just smooth as silk right now, and even some parents who complained earlier, although some still do, really actually like it now. They're very, very happy with it, I think, in general. Yeah, does that help?
Yeah, very much so. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to say, thank you so much for bringing all of your wealth of knowledge and experience here to Leonard. I believe, I remember, you have thirty-plus years' experience in education, and it, it shows that it's been wonderful to read your communications and to hear great things in the community. I just want to express my appreciation. And to that, also, ask of you and your expertise of what, what we as a board can do to help support these scores, these students, this learning, to see them flourish, and so that they can also feel the accomplishment of feeling that improvement and feel ready to move on to middle school and beyond.
Yeah. It's, it's a little hard for me to answer from an Oxford standpoint about what the board can do because I'm just not, I've been here, I was actually at the high school for a couple of years before this and back and forth between a couple of other districts. But what I do know from my experience with boards in general is just very simply, you know, being aware of what's happening, being aware of, of the curriculum and what's going well or not well in schools. But I think the biggest thing that I've heard in my thirty years as a teacher and administrator is just whatever you can do to verbally or physically support teachers. Teachers, I've always felt, have a really strong need to feel supported. It's not that they're kind of these fragile, soft people, but they, they, I just think teachers really thrive more when they really feel the communities behind them. And it's, it all starts at the top right, so it starts with the board and on down to parents and then the principals of the buildings. Just the more support teachers can feel, whatever that might look like, I think it looks different in a lot of communities, I've just found that it's extremely helpful and it really helps their morale, too.
Thank you.
And thank you for those kind words, too.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. And now we'll have Dr. Williman to continue our safety highlights.
All right, so we are getting near the end of our one-pager. It's taken about a semester, but it's been nice to be able to present some of this to you. Today, we're going to focus on the mass notification system and emergency preparedness. So the mass notification is in accordance with current Michigan law that requires that we have one way to mass notify the, the staff and students. This is something that we work in conjunction with both technology and maintenance to be able to ensure that there's ongoing testing as part of our drills, when we use it, that's part of how we're testing the system and assessing it, to be able to ensure that everywhere throughout the building is able to use it. And then we work with technology and maintenance to be able to address any issues that may come up. This is part of our layered approach to notifying staff in the event of an emergency. We've talked about Raptor Alert this year as well, and that's yet one more tool that we would be able to communicate with our staff and students in the event of any sort of emergency. So looking at emergency preparedness, there are a lot of things, but they all kind of go in line with the mass notification system, because we did reprogram our mass notification system to be in alignment with our standard response protocol. So as you can see, that is something that's listed under emergency preparedness. We also use standard reunification method, and I'm going down a little bit first, just because that is how our mass notification system is aligned. It is in step with the I Love You Guys Foundation, so when the mass notification is alerted through the standard response protocol, it does use the verbiage that is stated through the I Love You Guys Foundation. And we currently have sixteen district and campus staff that are certified as trainers in both standard reunification method and standard response protocol, as well as eight that are signed up to go. So we will, before we go on Christmas break, have twenty-four people in this district that are trainers for standard response protocol and standard reunification method. The purpose of that is having at least one person, specifically for standard reunification method, their reunification team lead, that would be that leader for any time if we needed off-site reunification, to be able to assist our district team, as well as our incident commander, so the person that would be in charge of any of our multi-hazard emergencies that it could occur. And we want to make sure they're trained to be able to train their campuses. So we do have district-level people who are trainers as well, so that we're able to support those campuses as they build that program. It's not just, you're going to go to a training and, "Good for you." Our district reunification lead regularly meets, they have monthly meetings with the district reunification team, and then she meets with the campuses with their incident commander, so the person that would be in charge, and then their reunification leader, the person that would oversee any sort of reunification for that campus. And then that helps everyone to be consistent with the same language. We've shared in the past, and then this is, let me make sure I can get it out, I should have gotten it out before, but every staff member, it's, doesn't want to come out, of course, there we go, is issued a short little, little cheat sheet, and that's part of your welcome to Oxford. Here's your badge, here's your standard reunifica, or standard response protocol badge. And it really is, just because we have the yellow flip charts, we talk about it, we have people who are trainers, this is also your ticket to understanding what to do, because there are, there are just, you know, emergencies happen, you get a little, little confused, you don't, you can't get to the yellow chart. When we look in here, it's over here. So I had to take a second to look around versus being able to look at something that is on me. And so that is one thing that we use. So then going back up, our safety drills, which align with the standard response protocol, our mass notification system, we also use Raptor Alert, and it can be in different forms, so it's not saying we're engaging the mass notification system and Raptor Alert. We could use one or both during a drill. We do comply with the requirements for the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan requires at least five fire drills, at least two tornado drills, and at least three safety, security drills. We require that one of the safety, security drills is an AED drill that is part of the requirement when we are applying to be a Michigan HeartSmart-certified, certified school, which all of our schools currently are, but we need to practice like we play. And so that is one of their required drills. Each year, we work with both the Addison Township Fire Department and the Oxford Fire Department to ensure that our cardiac teams are practicing. We don't want them to have to do it, but they're prepared. And there's different forms that are filled out for that. And then as part of Michigan, we do, they do require that we post our drill notifications. So if you are to click on the link that where it's, where it says "safety drills," it'll take you directly to the page where we post all of our safety drill information for each campus. And then we also register by September fifteenth every year with Oakland County. Oakland County Emergency Management requires by the September fifteenth, we have, we register with what the drills are, and that is each campus's responsibility. So then ALICE, we are an ALICE-certified organization. We've had that for two years. That means we're in compliance with our training and that we conduct ALICE drills, which is part of our safety, security drills. And then there's paperwork that the campuses have to fill out reflecting on what went well, what they need to work on. And then there's different components that my department has to work on to be able to submit that. And that includes pieces of our emergency operation plan, proof that we have at least one ALICE instructor in the district, and, as well as our training and any drills that we've done regarding ALICE. And so that is information on mass notification system and emergency preparedness. Any questions?
I'll try to say it in a, in a way. I know the EOP is very sensitive, so if you can't answer, please don't. Are all of the MOUs in place for our standard reunification?
Yes.
Thank you. And as far as the mass notification, what is the frequency of testing moving forward? When was the last test? And have, has it been tested to ensure that there is coverage everywhere? I know-
It's part of our drill process, that's part of what they're keeping track of. They have administrators, if there's multiple administrators, they're throughout their areas where they're expected to be. Teachers are also encouraged to report things. I know certain campuses use a Google form where people can input whether or not volume was loud enough, or if they could see the lights or anything like that. Some do it just by an email or come share that information to me, and then that's relayed to myself, to technology, and to maintenance, so that we can work with Summit to be able to address any changes. Because just because we tested at the beginning of the year, or the middle of the year, or any of that, and there's, there's times when, and Mr. Sanfalo would be able to share specific dates, because I know he's walked around with them, but we don't want to just rely on when there's no kids in the building and we're running through and doing all the bells and whistles. We want, as we're doing drills, being able to get that real-time feedback, so if there are any concerns, we can address as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, and Anita and Ryan are going to give us an overview of Wildcat Rememberance Day.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education and community. I'm Ryan Reed, and I have the honor of serving as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. I'm here with my colleague Anita Collins this evening, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and we are going to present on Wildcat Remembrance Day 2025. So on Wildcat Remembrance Day, we pause to honor the beautiful lives lost and honor the memory of Madison, Tate, Hannah, and Justin. We recognize this marks the fourth year since the tragedy of November 30th, 2021. We hold in our hearts all those who were injured and everyone whose lives were forever changed, including our students, staff, families, and community. This day encourages the entire community to come together in collective remembrance and support. Additionally, this day emphasizes love, reflection, and resilience as the community continues to move through a long and complex healing process. The purpose of our presentation this evening is to give you an overview of the plans and resources available to staff, students, and the community.
I like this setup, there's like a screen here and here. So we wanted to start by sharing that in August, and maybe even moving into early September, Oxford High School staff participated in a survey. Just to check in on where they are, at this point, the students who were in the building have all moved forward and graduated, and who remains is the staff, and that is critical in understanding their needs. And so they received a pretty extensive survey, checking in on how they're doing and what they need, and specifically, there was a section about Remembrance Day and really around that time, the month of November, and even into the first week of December. We are highlighting three themes that we heard from the staff. Unanimously, they said we do not want to have any drills in the month of November. They really valued opportunities to gather with one another. In the past, what this has looked like is, you know, as simple as bagels being brought in or lunch being served, and they've had an opportunity to come in as a community and connect with one another. And they also wanted us to continue with providing additional sub-coverage for those who may need it. So if they are overwhelmed with emotion or need to take a break, there is, there actually will be two or three subs on site that can go into the classroom and allow them time. So we are going to share specific details to Oxford High School, and then we'll get into information regarding the community. So at the high school specifically, we have additional subs being requested for Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, the 25th. We are off then Wednesday through Friday for Thanksgiving. And also Monday, December 1st, and again, if a staff member needs it and they are, they need a break, there's someone in the building who can step in and allow them an opportunity to take a break. Honoring their desire to gather and come together as a school community, we have organized a variety of meals and opportunities for them to do that, thanks to the generosity of some sponsors in the community. So on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, Woodside Church is sponsoring, providing, and serving lunch to the staff. On Monday, the 1st, and actually, Ryan will get into this, this will be happening at all of our schools on Monday, the 1st, but there's a warm welcome back for all the staff. It's being coordinated by the Wellbeing Committee, and McLaren Oakland is sponsoring that. Tuesday, December 2nd, lunch is being provided by All For Oxford, and our cabinet team's actually going to go and serve it to the staff. And then on Wednesday, December 3rd, Mr. Bigelow has arranged for a coffee barista on bar to come in for the staff. It's a late start, they can take their time in the morning, come in and gather with a sweet treat, and that is being sponsored by Oxford Bank. So we're really grateful to the local businesses in the area for sponsoring and the church. For the students, they're going to continue the Friendsgiving tradition, for the seniors that started that last year, and that was well received by the students, they're going to continue that. And then, I believe it's this Monday, they're going to continue with the holiday lighting and tree decorating. So this will be for staff and students to come together and be able to decorate a portion of the building and decorate some trees.
Next, we are going to outline the ways we're coming together as a community to remember, and also how we will be supporting one another in the coming days. So luminaries are available for all staff and students at every building. This is a way for us to collectively share light and honor the memories of Hannah, Madison, Justin, and Tate. We ask that everyone join us in lighting their luminaries at 7:00 PM on November 30th, creating a beacon of unity and remembrance across our entire community. Additionally, we will recognize a moment of silence at 12:51 PM on November 30th, and at that specific time, no matter where you are, we ask that you pause for a full minute of silent reflection to honor the lives we lost and hold their families and those affected in your hearts. Additionally, I want to talk about support. So for our families, the student support and wellness page details many resources that are available. If I can link out here, I will show a glimpse of that. This is a one pager, similar to what Dr. Williman just presented, that is on our website, along with many, many resources that are available for student support and wellness. I can't get to the link right now, but it will be live in the presentation out there for all of our families and community members to see. Additionally, we have another one-page resource, Mental Health and Resources, Wellness Resources for Staff, that is available on the website. Additionally, the All For Oxford Resiliency Center is still a hub for everyone in our community, and I invite you to check out their website. Anita briefly spoke about the warm welcome back that is being sponsored by McLaren Oakland. We, again, are thankful for all of our sponsors' generosity. On November 1st, excuse me, December 1st, we will welcome all staff back with just warmth and love and community and connection district-wide with bagels, warm drinks, and bookmarks that are decorated by all of our students, 900 bookmarks with uplifting messages for our staff. And finally, St. Joseph Catholic Church in Lake Orion has something planned for November 30th. The church is open from 2:00 to 4:00 PM for silent prayer. There's also a memorial set up in the sanctuary where you may light candles in honor of Hannah, Madison, Justin, and Tate. The church bells will ring for four minutes at 3:00 PM, and this is encouraged for anyone who might need a space for reflection and serenity on November 30th. That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
And that concludes the superintendent updates. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Milligan and team. Moving into item six, our Board of Education Matters, we'd like to dedicate our board discussion tonight to the memorial foundations and initiatives. As we continue to remember and honor the students lost, we chose to let this year's tribute be guided by their families specifically. They ask that we share the extraordinary work being done in their children's names, work that reflects who they were, what they loved, and the light that they brought into this world. These foundations continue to inspire healing, connection, and community, reaching far beyond We are deeply grateful to the families who continue to share their children's light with this world. Their ability to inspire hope and healing in the midst of profound loss is both humbling and extraordinary. The first foundation that we'd like to lift up is the For the Love of Nature, the Forever Justin Schilling Foundation. As you can see in that middle picture, Justin's Pollinator Garden is located next to WhitePine Coffee Roasters on the Pollyann Trail. The address is 33 Pleasant Street. This garden includes more than 1,800 square feet of native plants that help promote and protect pollinators who are in critical need of support for survival. It also provides a beautiful and peaceful space for the community to gather, reflect, and heal. You can see some of the gorgeous flowers in bloom. And that picture on the right was Justin's First Nature Walk, which was attended by over 200 participants. There was $25,000 raised, and it served as a healing event that brought the Oxford community together. The foundation's second community give back provided 25 mini-pollinator kits, and that was given to supporters of the foundation, and this helped create additional pathways for migrating pollinators while offering a meaningful way to thank those that support the foundation's mission.
Future goals include establishing a pollinator garden in Justin's honor at Oxford Elementary School, where many of his fondest memories were made and where his mother served as a noon aide. Plans also include expanding pollinator gardens throughout our community, and sponsorships are being requested. Community members and businesses are encouraged to reach out for more information on how to help, whether by offering locations for new gardens or sponsoring them. This is the mission and legacy of Justin's Foundation, leaving a better earth for generations to come.
Thank you. Next up is-
Hannah's Garden. Hannah's Garden was officially opened in 2025 and serves as a living space for reflection, connection, and healing. The garden embodies Hannah's bright spirit, creativity, and kindness, offering a place where the community can gather in peace, remember and find moments of beauty, values that reflect the heart of who Hannah was. Located at Seymour Lake Park Township Park, Hannah's Garden features hand-painted art, meaningful plantings, and quiet pathways that symbolize growth, renewal, and hope. The space is supported through community partnerships, volunteers, and ongoing contributions that help sustain and expand this place of remembrance. Looking ahead to spring and summer, there will again be opportunities for students to come, to become actively involved in helping care for the garden. The plan is to have a master gardener present to guide the work and allowing students not only to contribute, but to learn through hands-on experience in planting, stewardship, and environmental care. This continues the ongoing goal of making Hannah's Garden a space that brings together remembrance, community, and education. And if you haven't been there, you gotta go.
Speaking of, this year's remembrance events at Hannah's Garden will take place on November 30th and include opportunities for families and community members to participate together this year. As you can see from the timeline, starting at 3:00 PM, there will be luminary decorating with Forty Two Strong. As we know, one of Hannah's favorite holiday traditions was to decorate the tree, and they invite the community to bring ornaments and come and help decorate the tree at Hannah's Garden. At 4:30, the luminaries will be placed throughout the garden, and from 5:00 to 6:00, community members will be invited to partake in an illuminated stroll through the garden. We being will also be on site, they'll be serving hot beverages to support the event and also keep attendees warm during the evening. More information about the garden and ways to support its mission can be found at likehannah.org.
So the Chuch Foundation was created by Craig Schilling in honor of his son, Justin Schilling, an exceptional young man and a gifted bowler. The name Chuch was not only Justin's childhood nickname, but it also stands for caring, helping others, often creates hope, which is a reflection of the mission and values at the heart of this foundation. The foundation is dedicated to raising awareness for youth mental health through community events, outreach, authenticacies, including initiatives like the Coaches Care Initiative and mediation stations. Each year, the Chuch Foundation hosts events that bring the community together in Justin's honor, including an annual poker run and a charity bowling tournament. These events not only celebrate Justin's love for bowling and adventure, but also raise funds to support children and families. With a focus on healing, connection, and prevention, the foundation's long-term vision is to establish the Chuch Center for Mindfulness. More information about this foundation's mission, initiatives, and upcoming events can be found at their website, thechuch.org.
Thank you. Next up.
Forty Two Strong was created in honor of Tate Meyer, and its mission is to bring students together through peer mentorship, building a culture of connection, support, and leadership. The program is based on the belief that real change begins when students support each other, fostering trust, belonging, and purpose during some of the most vulnerable years of development. Here in Oxford, the district is proud to partner with Forty Two Strong and support that vision. The peer mentorship model is now actively embedded across all Oxford Elementary Schools and offered free of charge to families this school year. Currently, the program serves 320 students out of approximately 1,500 with plans to continue growing. This work has been made possible not only through Forty Two Strong's leadership, but also thanks to cooperation from district administration and dedicated support from Oxford staff who help facilitate student engagement and ensure that mentorship is incorporated in a meaningful and sustainable way. Looking ahead, Forty Two Strong is planning to continue expansion to include additional Oxford schools and partnerships in other districts such as Rochester, Emily City, and Reese. Their model aligns with the casual framework, connection, autonomy, support, understanding, and leadership, and emphasizes integrating peer relationships directly into the school day. I do want to say, just as a side note, personal note, my daughter is a member of Forty Two Strong and absolutely loves the program. It has been an absolute joy to watch her create relationships and become a much stronger, more confident young woman, so I can't thank them enough.
Yeah. I'll piggyback on that. Both my sons are in the program, and it's just, especially my oldest, it's really been awesome to see him over the last four years with different mentors, connecting with them, making those connections that really do last through their, not only through their current school time of life, but hopefully in the future. And really, we've seen that connection that keeps him accountable, and so I just, that's what I wanted to say as well. Thanks, Shane. And at the district level, Forty Two Strong and Oxford schools are working together to build a culture of connection where every student feels seen, supported, and valued. Capacity building is a key part of that effort, with training in place for staff and student leaders who help facilitate continued growth and success. At the state level, the foundation is also engaging in broader policy conversations. Forty Two Strong advocates for peer mentorship to be recognized as a tier-one universal support, encouraging alignment with school improvement plans under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, incentivizing the use of improvement funds for mentorship infrastructure. They also support the creation of sustainable funding streams and grant opportunities to help districts, especially those with high levels of trauma or absenteeism. Implement and expand programs like this. With the leadership of Forty Two Strong, cooperation from Oxford Community Schools, and the commitment of our staff, Forty Two Strong is helping to strengthen a culture of connection, resilience, and hope that reflects the best of our community and honors Tate's To support both local and state-level initiatives, as well as find more information, please visit- To support both local and state-level initiatives as well as find more information, please visit fortytwostrongtate.org.
Thank you again to our families for allowing us to lift up the foundations and initiatives created in your children's names. We take that as a great honor. I know that every one of them has touched us and the community personally. Going down the Polly Ann Trail, my kids and I stop at Justin's Garden every time visiting Hannah's Garden. Just the reach into the community can't be overstated, so thank you again for allowing us. Take a second, we can move into committee updates. We're starting with governance. James, whenever you're ready.
Yep, so we met last week, and really the focus of this last meeting was to go through our board operating procedure booklet. As you guys probably noticed, or hopefully looked at, on the board books, it's been uploaded up there for everybody to take a look at. There's a couple of things that we've added in there. We expanded out the board development section, more importantly around ongoing professional development. When you guys look through this section over there, you'll notice that we kind of spelled out more so... Okay, let's just make sure the feedback wasn't from my microphone, it's a vacuum. Talking about lifelong learners and supporting a strong educational environment, the continual professional development of us as board members. We do that through many different avenues, right? So we have webinars, we have online services, online courses, conferences that we've gone to in the past. There's been some efficacy work at the state level, and then county meetings, as well as internal retreats that we purposely search out to do. Really, this is to share an understanding and the responsibility of what we do here at the board table. And in doing so, in this outline guide, we talk about kind of the responsibilities and process for doing it. So really, just to call out, before attending any kind of major event, the Mackinac Leadership for M A S B or other ones, it's great to have the participation here at the board table so we can discuss what we're going to be doing, talk about the title of the conference, the outcome of it, and if possible, provide an estimate of cost. Obviously, if there's some travel and stuff, those costs can be discussed upfront, and we can look for approvals. Obviously, when you're there, there's some expenses and costs that may come up that come after. Obviously, during the event, we want to make sure that we're being engaged while we're there. It's not a vacation, it's not a free-for-all, right? It's all driven towards bettering us. Whoever goes and goes to these things, we ask that you take notes and be prepared to come back and speak at it at the board table, right? It's no different than in the professional setting where you go to these conferences and you bring your learnings back. Teachers, staff, administrators, they do the same thing on their side. So it seems very reasonable and understanding that we do the same thing. The other part of these conferences, too, that is kind of, you really can't put a dollar amount on it, is the networking ability that you get with other fellow board members, people that have been there much longer than us here on the board, different eco-sociodynamic statuses, different parts of Michigan. I mean, what some things might happen up north, we wouldn't even kind of think about what would happen down here. Their budgeting could be different and stuff. So being able to take those opportunities and actually networking is important. And then obviously, we talk about like after the event, I already spoke of sharing the stuff and then submitting required documents and reimbursement. We talk about the reimbursement requirements that we follow the same policy as our district staff, twenty-three oh-five A, and go with the travel guidelines. Along with that section, we also made sure and purposely put in the point-of-contact progression chart. This is something as a new board member, you know, there's times where we may be approached either from somebody on, you know, while we're at the local grocery store, or through conversation, or restaurants, emails, whatever. Kind of gives a go-to spot for us to kind of get familiar of where we would send people to go. So sometimes people see us and they come to us with their things, but it's not appropriate for us to micromanage or get into the weeds of stuff. So we'd redirect them back to, and this chart kind of shows, you know, typically it's teacher, principal, administrative, people on up and stuff. And then it has some other information in there around student health and stuff. So my ask, or our ask, I should say, is because it's attached there, look through it, see if there's anything that we're missing or that you want modified in there. If there's not anything, because this is a living document, it's not really a policy, doesn't require first reading or approval, but we'd like to have it published and put out there by December timeframe to just have it updated and keep growing with it. Did I miss anything, ladies?
No.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
Yep.
I had asked and mentioned before, if possible, could we have a red line version of what has been changed? I understand that it's fluid and changes are made, and it would not make sense for us to approve it every time as we did initially. But if we could just see maybe every six months or every year what the red line changes are in case there's anything that we have further questions on.
So, yeah, I hear what you're asking and acknowledge it. Nothing for changes, more additions, and that's why I called up those sections explicitly, because those are the ones that we added there, as well as, I think there might have been one other one where we added the policy number to it. But, yeah, kind of going forward, you know, we can look at that as far as that it's easy to call out. But in this case, the board development was a big section that we worked on and really focused on, just because it's been an ask. And I think we had a placeholder there before briefly about it, but really trying to fill in the stuff. I mean, what you guys started last year was a great foundational work, and now we're just trying to continue to pack it with useful, meaningful information and not make it overwhelming for anybody that may come onto the board in the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
Huge shout out to Christie for making sense of our ramblings in that meeting, because it's mainly pertaining to this page number thirteen that James is describing, the board development page. So she definitely made sense of it. It looks phenomenal, really appreciate it, because now it actually flows instead of just our ramblings and bullet points.
Yeah, I was gonna say, looking at it, there's one spelling error that's in there that I'll send it to you. But when I was reading it, I was like, oh, hey. So again, you know, second set of eyes always helpful for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And to that end, when we have the red line similar with policy, you know what to look for, what has changed. I know that there were small instances, you added policies, you defined committees slightly different, and rather than run it through Chat G P T and just say, what are the differences? It would just be helpful for the whole board on a semi-regular basis just to see what the difference, you know, and progression is. So thank you, that is a lot of work, and I'm glad that you were able to get it encompassed into a comprehensive page and good flow for our future boards to follow, understand, and know the expectation. So appreciate that governance committee. Any further questions for governance? Excellent work, thank you. Mike, would you like to give us an update on finance?
Sure, I can do that. Specifically going over yesterday's workshop? I mean, that's pretty much what we're, that's what it became. Okay, so yesterday, we ended up holding a workshop. The finance committee became a workshop because of two of the main topics on it were the insurance discussions and the center-based program. So the insurance discussion, we went over the the kind of the quoting process that we had put out there as far as, as far as looking at new insurance providers. We had, we heard from two members, one was Middle City, another one was our, sorry, John, help me out if John's here. Well, but, she was a broker, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so a broker and our Middle City's representative. And we, it was reported back to us that all the private insurance companies did decline. And the, so we were really looking at the pools that were remaining in. Really, the main pool that came back with a, with a quote for the bulk of the policy was Middle City's, and then Mazelle's with the workers, specifically workers' comp. And Mazelle, that's kind of, in this group, that's their expertise. And so the recommendation was to go with Middle City's and Mazelle's. We kind of reviewed the policy, went over, it's, the workers' comp portion is comparable to our current cost. And we, the same kind of with Middle City's, we did a brief, I'd say, kind of, we kind of in-depth, but for the most part, brief as far as the policy is concerned, overview of the coverage. And some of you, I know you will be getting, if you weren't there, you can get this copy of these documents that we received. And if you have any questions, we plan to... I missed my notes. Where was it, on the December ninth meeting? We, this will, any discussions certainly we can have that, please, if you have them beforehand, it would be best so that John can kind of prepare any questions that are outlying so we can ideally make a decision in December ninth.
Can I jump in just a second here? For those that weren't able to attend, it would make the most sense to start the year off in January if we are intending to switch over providers. And so putting that in the perspective of one board meeting left after this for the rest of the year, I just wanted to ensure that you're aware that the ideal path would be to make a decision at the December ninth meeting. Understandably, it is up to the board, and everyone in their own decisions may decide how you want to proceed, but that is the hopeful target at the December ninth meeting. We did ask for additional information from the brokers, so not only the information that was shared in the meeting, there will be additional information coming that was requested during the meeting. But just really start thinking about the questions that you may have and any materials that you may need, and ask that of John before.
Yes, so do, we have hard copies tonight for those? I know we had hard copies that were left over.
Yeah, do you have somebody?
Okay, so if you go talk to Justin.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we all have. So I'm going to compile a recommendation, a recommendation memo with this information tied to it. There's some policy docs we're waiting to get from Katie. That'll all be sent to you as soon as those are ready to go, as soon as possible ahead of the board meeting, so there's more time to adjust than to what you're saying on the end about processing at the December meeting. So if we want to execute in January, we have to finalize in December.
Okay. My only, on your recommendation memo, as we get the rest of those documents, please clearly articulate what some of the changes are and kind of bullet point of like coverage of things. Because I know like when we sat through the meeting, there's several things that, while our deductible currently is X with a coverage of Y, this new would be a different X with a different Y, and I think it's really important that we as a board can clearly look through and see where our stuff's at. You know, one in particular stands out is the dog coverage, right? They talked about, you know, we could have a rider or carrier addition to it, but, you know, just to make sure that we're fully aware of what might be changing dollar amounts.
So I'm going to include, there's a summary document that breaks out the key ones between them that'll be in there. I'll probably separately highlight like the liability, their solution to it, which I thought was pretty good.
Yeah.
And then if anything had jumped out, I'll check my notes, I'll put that in there, and then we'll go from there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there was the page in the physical document that we received that did go over a lot of them. Obviously, not every single one, but where the dog was. And then, of course, the creative solution to the insurance premium after two million and having kind of mutual accountability as far as that goes, which I thought was a great solution and surprised more insurance companies haven't thought of that structure, to be honest. But then also the full contract and the, I'm going to botch the name, memo of coverage? Coverage, did I get it right? Okay, no, it's M O C. That will also be sent to every board member. And we had asked for two other documents as well along with that, so just keep a lookout for that.
Any other questions regarding that right now? The other half of the morning was spent with Pam Beal and Jessica presenting the center-based program. They did present it before this meeting as well to the community. But going through that application process with Open Schools, they had the referent group at Open Schools approved, kind of moving forward, they're going to have a site visit coming up. And then they kind of just spelled out the timeline of what the concept approval should be before. I mean, this is, right now, that's what we're in, April through December twenty-fifth. And then Phase Two would be the site and building, beginning bids, January through May of next year. Then May through June of next year would be operational build-out. And August would be the final launch, somewhere around August. So just kind of highlights there for anybody that doesn't know. So the plan is currently at the O A C campus. We will be, the current proposal is to build it in the front of that campus, removing four buildings that are there right now that are unusable. And Open Schools has an amount of money set aside for kind of these projects. And so that's what this approval process is. And so we really, I mean, I really appreciated the detail that went into that. I know we had a few little good conversations, right, and maybe some suggestions. And so I'll be interested in seeing how that all plays out. And the other big kind of highlight is this prefab building that we can, I mean, what I just said in the timeline, it's a relatively short build time, and just the, how much those, how far those have come in the last ten, twenty years. And we saw some pictures of similar buildings. Notre Dame Prep uses one, and they'll actually be going there for the site visit. And so just seeing, really, from the outside, you can't tell, it's a prefab. And so it's really encouraging, I mean, it's a really cool concept. Innovation was key in this as far as that's concerned. So I appreciate your work, appreciate Courtney's work as well. And, yeah, and all the work that's gone into this, so thank you for that. And that's, that kind of rounded out really our day.
Sorry, couldn't find the button. Real quick, I just wanted to, you mentioned the prefab building. I was lucky enough to get to go to visit one of these buildings, and it was not like anything I thought it would be. It looks like a solid-built structure like any other building. In fact, probably nicer than some other buildings. It, I was touching the walls, I was checking door frames, I was trying to check all the things to find something I wouldn't like, and I couldn't do it. So I think this is an excellent opportunity, a great idea. Like you said, it's innovative, outside-of-the-box thinking, and I appreciate Pam and her team and the efforts. So thank you.
Questions, comments? Okay.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, there's a lot of work going into this, right? You know, it's a big undertaking, there's definitely... a big undertaking. There's definitely a need for it in the county, which was clearly called out. Correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to be doing a larger board presentation next in December for this, going through that. But I would encourage, you know, everyone to look at it. I mean, it's, that's a large thing. It's like brand-new curriculum, right? And new programming that we're bringing in here. So some people have reached out, pros and questions and concerns and stuff like that. I encourage that more because this is definitely something that affects the whole community here as well as the larger county community and schools and stuff. So I'd like to hear as much feedback from everybody as possible. So highly encourage that.
Excellent point, James. There, during our community of the whole meeting prior to tonight's board meeting, we were not able to have OCTV livestream. However, we did have it recorded and that will be on the website hopefully tomorrow. You know, it's late night for everybody, so thank you in advance for that. So please watch, there will again be a presentation at our meeting on the 9th. And just echoing the same sentiment that there has been a lot of work done here, and it's very much appreciated. So thank you to the team in charge of that. Okay, any further questions, comments about that? And thank you, everyone who was able to turn that Finance Committee into a four-hour meeting. All right, policy. We had, we had mostly standard policies, as you'll see for probably the 20th time this year. 3118 had more changes, so we will need to approve that again. Everything else is standard from my understanding from Ryan. The forms in 4113 are very beneficial and helpful, and so glad that they included those this time around. The only change that we did make was to 2203. You'll see that it is a .1. I know I had included you all on this email. There was a community member, and the committee ended up agreeing with her assessment that it did not read properly. It sounded confusing, and so we did take it to TRUEN, and our recommendation was to change it. They did come back to us and say that they purposely made it vague like that, which we said, well, we don't want it purposely vague. So I think it helps our parents and students and staff clearly understand this policy when we spell it out the way that it is in practice. And so TRUEN looked over our small revision and did agree that that was absolutely fine to proceed with. And aside from that, we still have some extra policies that we're waiting to hear back some recommendations on. Those were the optional policies. At this point, we have gone through all of the mandatory policies for the year, and there's just a few optionals laying out there that we're deciding whether or not to bring forward. So that was our policy. Any questions, comments? All right, well, that is first reading. They will be back at our next meeting for approval. Moving on into Item D, we have our field trip first reading. Is there, there's not a presentation, it's just in the packet, correct? Thank you. Yeah, that one's far, far out, but sounds fantastic. Item E, our 2526 Board Meeting Schedule, if anybody could make that motion. Shane, thank you.
Move to approve the amended 2025-2026 Board of Education meeting schedule as presented.
Support. James, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item F, our FOIA appeals. In addition to the new platform, next request, where you can log in and see the progression of each FOIA, Tanya and Justin sent us all an email giving a brief synopsis of all three of these today. Hopefully, all had a chance to read through, and if anybody feels strongly to make a motion on the first. I will move to uphold the denial of the Danielle Crozek FOIA number 25-54. Is there support?
Support.
James? Okay, so just to reiterate, upholding the denial means it is not reversed, that the denial stands. And as we move into discussion, I just wanted to go over the timeline of this as I was involved. There was information requested, and the original FOIA asked for the information. However, they asked for the information from the wrong date, and so it was denied. Upon further talking and realizing that we did have the information and it was easily accessible, it was just that the FOIA was filled out improperly. At that point, it was sent to the requester. So to be clear here, the Requester does have the information that she had requested, which is why I am in support here of upholding. Tanya, did I cover that adequately? Do you have anything? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving into our second FOIA, would anybody like to make a motion there?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, James.
Move to uphold the partial denial of the Corey Vander K FOIA 25-38.
Shane, thank you. All right, moving into discussion on this one. Would anybody like to say anything? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries. And our third FOIA, would anybody like to make that motion? I will move to uphold the denial of the Corey Vander K FOIA number 25-37. Support. James, any discussion on this particular FOIA? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, we have a proposed addition to our legal counsel roster. If anybody, thank you. James, make that motion.
Yep, I move to add Varnum LLP as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
Support. Shane, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our Item 7 bid award, we had this, our last meeting, and no questions went back and forth. Hopefully, everybody is satisfied with that. If so, if somebody could make a motion. James, thank you.
Keep it going here. Move to approve the bid, excuse me, the boiler bid award for the Clear Lake Elementary as presented.
Support. Mike Whitney, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yay, Clear Lake gets another boiler. Unscheduled public comment, do we have any this evening? No, thank you, Justin. Moving into our scheduled activities, we are coming up on Thanksgiving recess, of course, our Wildcat Remembrance Day, plenty of opportunities for the community to come together, our next Board of Education meeting, and final for the year on the 9th, and then moving into our holiday break. Any administrative clarification, Dr. Milligan? Thank you. Any final board comments? Shane, thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to thank the Addison Township Library folks for showing up and presenting, Pam and her team for presenting the Center Based Program in the meeting prior to this. Thank you, guys, for all the hard work that goes into those types of presentations and making yourself available. So we truly do appreciate it. Sorry, excuse me, just getting over being sick. I'm over being sick. But thanks again to everybody for their hard work. John and his team, everybody in the administrative team, thank you, guys. More importantly, again, thank you all for taking the time to promote and embrace these wonderful organizations that we have here in remembrance of our students. And I just hope that going out in the community, everybody can just think about these folks and start to embrace one another, you know, just find a way to be kind and be nice to each other. And I think that will go a long way in carrying forward that message and their spirit. So just hope everybody has safe holiday, and again, just find a way to be kind to one another.
I'd like to piggyback off that. I think these foundations are great, right? We had something horrific strike our community, the seed of evil, that I don't think any of us ever would have expected. And out of that have come some great positivity, some connections and stuff. Along with the families, there's still others that are in our community that were there that day, that are still in their different steps of journey of their mental healing. I think of the first responders, myself being one there, you know. So definitely take a couple extra minutes, reach out, check in with people. I mean, holidays are stressful enough when you have family and everything else coming in, but all of this stuff here, our community's been through a lot, and it's really impressive. And give each other a little bit of grace and love, and it, you know, it definitely shows. So, yeah, thank you.
Two very wonderful points to end on. Thank you both. Can't top that. Fantastic job. All right, it is 9:08 PM. This meeting is adjourned.